Specifically, a redevelopment concept plan for Lake Point Green. I'm going to start by giving you a bit of an overview of the land use plan of the Lake Point Redevelopment District and then about the redevelopment concept in particular, redevelopment concept plan in particular. And then the developer and his team is going to come up and do a presentation for you and then we'll have an opportunity for discussion and questions. So to get started, just as a reminder, we did create the Lake Point Redevelopment District specifically for this area back in 2023, and that new zoning district was applied to the property at that same time. The zoning district establishes standards for development on the property, including things like setbacks and location of the building on the site, location of parking, and really focuses on mixed abuses and the pedestrian experience in the area. It also provides for some new house-scale housing types to support some different lifestyle options, so like townhomes, urban homes, live-work units and things like that. It also establishes a requirement for redevelopment concept plan to be submitted and reviewed and ultimately approved by city council before future development steps can take place on the property. So the redevelopment concept plan is intended to provide a mechanism to review large, complex or phased projects within the Lake Point Redevelopment District. It enables the commission and council to evaluate the development's relationship with the surrounding area and ensure that negative impacts are minimized. We can also evaluate the location of the proposed uses, connectivity and location of public spaces, and then it enables the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the housing mix that is required. The Development Code establishes some approval criteria for the redevelopment concept plan, and it says that the commission and council should ensure consistency with terms and conditions of prior approvals, consistency with a comprehensive plan, with the purpose statements and applicable standards of the Development Code, and that it makes sure the development considers the existing roadway network and minimizes impacts to the surrounding area. Looking at the land use plan, which was adopted in 2018, it said that Sugar Land will continue to grow and evolve to stay a desirable place to live, work and do business. It also said that we would, as we see market needs and demographics change over time, that we would adapt through thoughtful development and redevelopment. And so that's part of what we're talking about tonight, is adapting to market changes that have taken place over time. We recognize that we need to increase our housing here in the city, and so this proposal brings us along there. We are focusing on creating walkable mixed-use places, regional and neighborhood activity centers that bring together a variety of uses where people can live, work, connect, kind of all in one area. So this area, the Lake Point area, is part of one of the regional activity centers. The overall activity center is about 150 acres and includes a variety of uses that are already on the ground today. So you can see here in this map, the red dashed line is the boundary of the regional activity center. You have Highway 6, Highway 59, Flure Daniel Drive, and then Creek Bend, which kind of wraps around the property. So you have the former Flure campus right here, which is 52, 53 acres of that, but it includes retail office, you have St. Luke's Hospital there, as well as some existing more compact forms of residential within the development. You may recall that back in December of 2023, at the same time that we adopted the Lake Point District, we did make some changes to the land use plan areas of change section because we did see that the market was changing and we needed to make changes to reflect that. So for example, we decreased the amount of office and increased the amount of residential. We also increased the number of multifamily to 1,100 for the regional activity center. So we haven't done a redevelopment concept plan before, so we wanted to just take a minute to make sure that you understand the difference between what it is and what it isn't. It is intended to be a general concept plan that shows the location of development areas and the streets that form them, the civic or recreational spaces, proposed housing types, the location and number of multifamily and connectivity to the surrounding area. What it's not is a specific set of regulations. So we already have the regulations in the zoning, the Lake Point Redevelopment District. So as I mentioned, you have building setbacks, you have where the building will be sited in proximity to the pedestrian realm, you have location of the parking and things like that. That's all already codified in the Development Code, and so any development that takes place on this property will have to comply with those requirements. It's also not intended to be a detailed site plan. It is 50-plus acres. We anticipate that this is going to take a number of years to redevelopment. This isn't all going to happen overnight, and so this general plan allows for there to be flexibility to accommodate changes over time. So here we have the proposed redevelopment concept plan for Lake Point Green, and I'll just do a quick little overview. So again, you have Flure Daniel Drive here and Creek Bend Drive going around the edge here. They are proposing some multifamily units here around the existing garage and then right as you come off of Flure Daniel Drive into the site. And then you have about 31 acres of other residential types, including townhomes, urban homes, duplexes and multiplexes. And then they are proposing about 10 acres of civic and recreational spaces. So there are quite a few mature trees on this site, and so they have really designed their layout to accommodate preservation of a lot of those trees, and I know in their presentation, they're going to talk about that a little bit more. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Frank and his team, and they're going to walk you through their vision.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members, planning and zoning commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of all of you tonight. My name's Frank Liu. I started the Love It Company back in 1980 with my roommate from college, and I'm proud to stand here with an experienced team. Many of them are here today, and many of them have been with our company for many, many years, for decades. And their dedication and knowledge are the big reason why we're here today. This development is truly a lifetime opportunity, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The land is home to hundreds of majestic oak trees. I started my career building homes in West University, right around the Rice University area. I did my first townhouse in 1982, and it's just very rare to have an opportunity to have this opportunity of all these trees lining up, just inviting us to do something very different and very special. And for the most part, we're very fortunate. Most of the trees are pretty well-located. We don't think we have to cut down many to accommodate our development. And you can imagine homes fronting onto green park-like spaces where nature is just not a backdrop, but a central feature of our development. In addition to the natural beauty, the urban setting, the trails with hundreds of majestic oaks surrounded by water, it adds an extraordinary dimension to this development. In my 45-year career, even though I look like I'm only in my early 50s, I have been fortunate to work with some of the best and most talented architects and planners in the world and on many, many sites. And I can say with full confidence, this is one of the more exciting and meaningful developments I have ever been a part of. I look forward to working with the city to bring this vision to life, and I'm going to turn it over to two youngsters that will make a much better presentation than me. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Howdy, Sugar Land. My name is Kirby Liu. I'm the son of Frank Liu, and given that he is only 50, that means I must be only two. I am a managing director with the Love It Group, and I'm also here with Adam Williams, who is?
Good afternoon. I'm design director with Love It, and so I manage and work with our architectural team working on architecture, master planning and urban development.
So with the project that is 56 acres, right? Well, sorry. Thank you, Mayor Zimmerman, and the commissioners and council members for inviting us here today. I am very excited to present our vision for you guys. Now, when people ask, like, how do you start approaching a 50-plus-acre site? Like, what do you do? What is your first mark on the piece of paper? And I think how we, as a company, do it is that we first understand where we came from and where we are now. And where we came from, from the site's perspective, is that there is already so much natural beauty and activation of Brooks Lake Trails. So the entirety of our vision for this project is driven by how we are integrating within the existing Lake Point urban fabric. And I also want to emphasize that we, as a company, the Love It Group, we are the three-time winner of the Good Brick Award for Preservation, twice in 2023 alone. We basically monopolized the award ceremony that year because we have always taken a sensitive approach to historic sites and sites that are very important to the community. And I emphasize that because it's actually to our detriment. I mean, a lot of developers that you will see out there that basically, look, what's most valuable to them is a clear-cut land that gives a maximum flexibility. But to us, what excites us about this property is not the fact that it's a tabula rasa where we can just erase everything that was there before, it's the fact that there is a legacy here that we can preserve. Now, again, we've been in business for 45 years, started by my dad in 1980, and he talked a little bit about how we are working with some of the best architects in the world to produce our projects. So someone who's not here with us today, he's based in Philadelphia and couldn't make it unfortunately, is our urban designer, Ludwig von Talvo Beil, and he spent a many number of years at a firm called DPZ, Duane Plater Zeiberg. But before I get there, again, we are very experienced in terms of producing attractive residential in close proximity to green spaces and integrating them together to create a unique and remarkable space. We have unparalleled experience in managing detention. You know, Houston does have quite unpredictable weather, and so some of the things that we understand are concerns is how are we going to make sure this project is going to help the resiliency of the entire Lake Point region and not just be, you know, a parking lot that's going to make the flooding worse. Of course, we're actually removing parking lot and making things more pervious, removing the impervious cover, so, you know, that's... But beyond that, you know, whenever we do have to do additional detention work, we are making that a beauty feature, I guess. These are some of the other examples that we've done in terms of, you know, close, more compact homes that cater toward young urban professionals, and also larger homes that accommodate families that are larger in size. Now, with respect to our land planner, you may not have heard of DPZ, but you may recognize this movie still, which is from The Truman Show. And one of Duane Plater Zeiberg's, you know, first major projects that put them on the map was building Seaside, Florida, which became the set for The Truman Show. So they're known for creating idyllic, close-knit towns that really preserve or really have a sense of community. They're also known for this project called Alice Beach. Again, these things, I can't even believe I'm looking at a place in Florida. The rest of our team here, like I just said, you know, a lot of our team members have been with us for decades. We are committed to this site, not because of our economic commitment, but also because our team members are our Sugar Land residents. So, you know, Josh Sanders is a Sugar Land resident, a resident for many years, and your three kids go to where? What school? St. Lawrence. Beyond that, there's Adam Williams, there's myself, and there's also our in-house landscape architect, myself and our landscape architect. We started, we studied, we studied architecture and landscape architecture at Harvard, and Adam studied architecture at Rice. What is the vision? So again, like I said, our vision is about capitalizing on the Brooks Lake Trails and figuring out how do we turn them into not just an amenity for the residential development, but an icon for the city of Sugar Land that draws people in and thinks of this place as their future home. What we have looked at, my dad mentioned that the majestic oaks are the major things for us, right? And he started development in the West University District around Rice University. What Rice, the neighborhood fabric around Rice University is known for are these oaks and these running trails. So you guys have probably heard of transit-oriented development, but this is something new for me called trail-oriented development. Now, we have seen how these parks and trails have led to a catalyzation of retail and development in cities like Dallas with the Katy Trail, which led to over $1 billion in new investment. And in 2013, when Buffalo Bayou was redone on Allen Parkway, that Allen Parkway sort of waterfront saw a quadrupling in the number of businesses. So our goal is to take the Brooks Lake Trail and use that as our tool to catalyze the retail development around us. But this doesn't just end at commercial development. What we're trying to build is community, and when I say community, I mean community that is appealing to people in all stages, individuals and families in all stages of life. As you can see here, it's like Gen Z, millennials, they're spending less money on alcohol, they're going running and drinking juice instead. And, you know, we are right next door to St. Luke's, and St. Luke's has such an amazing sort of programs that they have, but what we do lack is just sort of easy access to recreational green space, similar to the way they have at the Texas Medical Center. So, you know, this, the having great green space is so important because it creates better health outcomes for both young and older adults. Again, just overall context, again, St. Luke's is over there, and Whole Foods is over here. Now, why is Brooks Lake Trails unique within the inventory of Sugar Land's outdoor beauty? Look, for the most part, Sugar Land's outdoor beauty is connected to residential subdivisions and other natural features, but there's almost no other place in Sugar Land where there is the connection between the trail and the retail, and this is the secret sauce that makes that kind of synergy come together. Right now, Lake Point Village, which has the Whole Foods, the Troscos, the Fleet Feet, it kind of turns its back to Brooks Lake Trails, but that is just where we are now, and where we are going, I think, is a vision where we can really catalyze this relationship to this waterfront. So this is actually, before, this image is from 2014 in the Heights area, this similar kind of idea where basically a bunch of buildings turned their back to the trails. It was redeveloped, and now what was formerly the back has now become the face of the project, and this is where everyone hangs out and has community and flies kites and goes roller skating and all that kind of stuff. Just to underscore what we are talking about in Brooks Lake Trails and why are we even mentioning it? Look, there is 1.8 miles of trail along the waterfront right now, but once we weave the trail through the project, through Flure Daniel Drive and Creek Bend, et cetera, we are effectively doubling the amount of trail. Back to Rice University, the entire Rice University track is 2.9 miles versus what the new, what we're proposing is the new Brooks Lake Trails, 3.6 miles. So again, this is something of true scale that can really put this project on the map. Adam?
Great. Thank you. So I'd like to get into a little more of the detail of the master plan and the concept plan here as we go forward, you know, keeping in mind this emphasis of not only what we're doing to affect the specific site we're looking at, but how kind of the ripple effects will affect the surrounding community. So as you can see here, which we pointed out before, there's a real focus on the green space and preserving these beautiful oak trees. The current parking lots there are arrayed in this kind of radial fashion that actually works out really well for preserving these trees and these kind of central connective tissue of the site while allowing us to build and convert what was pavement and parking lot to homes, front yards, community space, and all of that that will kind of work together and knit the site back together. So we're going to focus a little bit on these two areas that we've highlighted called the lawn and the bridge, and these are really the wow moments for the site that will allow it to extend its impact beyond just this specific, you know, 52 acres by creating civic spaces that people from the surrounding neighborhood will visit and by introducing this trail network, neighborhoods to the north, you know, and to the kind of the other sides here, have a better connection to the trails and to the rest of the kind of commercial development to the south of the site.
I also want to mention is like, hey, what makes a great trail is not the fact that you're running on whatever X number of feet of sidewalk or whatever it is. What makes a great trail is that you have a payoff after all that hard work. You can hang out and sprawl out on the lawn and all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of what we think is what is the big move here that's going to make our project truly unique.
Absolutely. And, you know, when we look at a site like this, we think holistically, and I would just like to reiterate, we're not just home builders, we're not going to subdivision this off and have five different cooks in the kitchen. We think about design from community first, and that's why we have prioritized this green space as the main attractor and the main anchor here. And develop, we have a history of developing communities that people are proud of and that people want to invest in and build their own community around. So I'd like to show just a few comparisons to put the scale of this site into some context because it really is, you know, when you drive by it, you may not really know what's going on in the interior because it was a corporate campus and it's a lot of parking lots, but this scale really is a great opportunity, and it's one of the few contiguous spaces like this that can be developed with a vision to make this kind of wow moment. So for example, here is the Heinz Water Wall Park in the Houston Galleria, you know, huge, huge attraction just for recreation, visitors, tourists. It's about 3.4 acres. We're talking about close to 10 acres. And again, an example of Discovery Green in downtown, which has been wildly successful for transforming a former parking lot that did have a few great oak trees into it, into the number one destination for downtown. And you can see the variety of programming and activities, and just by creating this public green, it has spurred development around the edges, and the programming here is not just dependent on fixed retail, but the program is always changing. There are events, festivals, pop-ups, and that's something we wanted to give an outlet to by creating kind of a grand lawn space and some other secondary community spaces. So that kind of takes us to the big moment here, which we're calling the lawn. This is kind of the main wedge as you would look towards what used to be the floor campus. These tree-lined parking lots right now will transform into this tree-lined green. This is the central community civic space. You can see in this conceptual rendering, we're showing some townhouses. This could be a mix of urban homes, duplexes, townhouses, but what we find really compelling about this is the front doors of all the houses are facing this green, and so you're not seeing garages, you're not seeing everyone's driveway. What you're seeing is your next-door neighbor, your friends, your visitors, who are all enjoying this green space together. And because of the scale of this, there's a lot of different programming that can happen from everyday events like playgrounds, play equipment, just kind of kids' sports-playing area, to special events or monthly events like farmers' markets, outdoor weddings and things like that. And so we, again, as Love It, we have a lot of experience in doing this sort of event programming and things like that as well in some of our, some of our commercial properties. So another comparison, I wanted to get kind of a little bit on the smaller scale. Our kind of second main wow moment in the site is what do you see right when you cross the bridge? And how do we create a sense of arrival and a sense of place, not just for the residents here, but for people visiting, people who may, you know, be shopping, going to Whole Foods, but they want to see that there's, oh, there's a special art event happening here at Lake Point Green. So we wanted to create this sense of entrance and arrival. We looked at some examples in the Houston Heights where they were able to achieve this through, you know, tree-planted boulevards, having kind of art and public space that actually happens along that entrance there. And again, right adjacent to that kind of development in the Heights, which was focused on the landscape, the public realm, walkability and the streetscape, all of the secondary benefits rippled out into the neighborhood here. So you can see how this case study of Heights Mercantile, again, directly tied into the hike-and-bike trail and the green space, has brought in, you know, top-tier retail establishments there. And so this is kind of your vision of that coming across the bridge, entering into the community here, giving it an identity and really just that classic sense of a neighborhood. Again, you'll notice the front porches, front doors that are facing the street and just a sense of connectivity, walkability. And I know we kind of, we're talking about the concept plan, so I don't want to get too much into the specific kind of zoning of what goes where and what goes where, but this general idea gives us the flexibility to meet the market needs, be it through mixed-use or more kind of dedicated residential areas with small, small other parcels that may be more fit to more civic or community-oriented spaces. And so we just wanted to kind of show some examples of the look and feel here. You'll notice we have kind of a variety of housing types, but they still fit within the planning and zoning guidelines with the sidewalks, the median, the street trees, setbacks that, you know, are close to the street to give you that kind of nice town feel and connectivity. And kind of going back to the approach, the connection to the water here, some other developments you may see, you know, you drive by, you say, wow, I bet that's a really nice neighborhood, but I'm just seeing the backs of houses, and it's probably beautiful inside, but, you know, until you kind of go through the gate and, you know, drive around through the cul-de-sac, you don't necessarily see that sense of community. So we're proposing that houses would face onto Creek Bend and have views of the water so that when you are approaching this or even just, you know, passing through the area, you really get a sense of what this community feels like even from the outside. Little bit of projected timeline, you know, it's 2025, this site, you know, has been unoccupied for a little while, and even, even before, when it was an office complex and parking lot, it had so much more potential, I think, that, that we are seeing now. So we were excited to start this. Of course, it could be executed in phases, just depending on how we move forward, working with Planning and Zoning Department, you know, as we go, take next steps. So just a kind of overview of the site plan again. You'll notice we do have some parcels that are designated as multifamily areas. We chose those areas for a few reasons. One, we're concerned about the street edge facing Creek Bend. There's an existing parking garage that is there, which actually will be very useful for any planned multifamily, but we- for any planned multifamily, but we plan on screening that and skinning it and having, actually the residences facing the street. So we're kind of hiding, hiding that aspect of it. It also gives us flexibility in those areas to talk about maybe event or retail or commercial programming as this discussion goes forward. But really the central focus here is preserving those beautiful live oak trees and creating this central green that ties back into the existing trail network. Thank you.
So with that, just a reminder of the kinds of things that are for your discussion tonight as far as the redevelopment concept plan goes. So the uses that are proposed are allowed under the zoning. And so what we're really looking at is the location of those uses, the connectivity of the proposed development with the adjacent area, the location of the public spaces, the location, a number of multifamily, the proposed housing mix, and then the relationship with the surrounding area. So just real quick, before we get into your discussion and questions, next steps, we do have a community meeting planned for tomorrow evening where we have so far quite a few residents that have RSVPs, so I think we'll have a good turnout for that. And then we anticipate a public hearing with these two groups together again on May 6th, following which we will ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a recommendation on the redevelopment concept plan. And then we will be back in front of the city council the following week for, for your action. So with that, that is the end of our presentation and we are here to answer questions that you have.
This time, why don't we go ahead and open up the questions? And that would be both the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Who wants to start? Go ahead, Suzanne.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Liu, thank you. I appreciate the work you put into this and staff, I appreciate your presentation as well. I have quite a few questions, but I'm gonna kind of wait until I hear a lot more back from the public. I'm interested in seeing what they say because at the end of the day, it's what they want. My biggest question is how flexible are you in phase two to pivot? I don't see any retail there and I know that it's market driven at this point for, for more residential R1. My concern is, and I've already maybe made this point earlier, we in this neighborhood are looking for more mixed use. This is not mixed use in my opinion, it's R1 and multifamily. So if we see a pivot and the market changes by 2031, can you make those changes? Can you add? Thank you. Can you add or can you change to add some retail in there? And I don't mean retail, I mean restaurants, because I don't see anybody here in this neighborhood, after you build it up to some degree, having a place to enjoy themselves.
Absolutely. Number one is that we, you know, there are some vacancy issues in the immediate surrounds. I think there's around 27,000 square feet available in the Lake, Lake Point Village, which is where the Whole Foods are, is right now. So to me, you know, retail follows rooftops and we must bring rooftops in order to make sure the existing businesses can do well. So that's kind of the, the whole thesis behind is about stitching all this stuff together so that it functions as one. Secondly, is that because of the way that we're designing our street grid, it's easy to bring services into specific sites. So one of the ones that we, we have identified is this center green space, which is currently not part of the community kind of civic green space. So this piece right here is going to, you know, through substru-, whatever, subsurface infrastructure and what have you, that could be converted into a site for, for retail in the future. But again, it's hard to know exactly what that means in the future. I mean, maybe we'll have self-driving cars and we don't need as much parking and all this other kind of stuff. Who knows, you know? So things are changing so rapidly, but we, we are definitely planning for flexibility. We think that is a good practice.
Follow up.
Thank you. I realize that rooftops come first and that that's what creates the retail for you and I appreciate that. And that's why I'm mentioning 2031 for flexibility. Excuse me. The second question I have is I'm looking at this and I see multifamily next to existing residential. I'm, I'm thinking, is this the right place to put it after we have residential there that's already been there for a while? Is there any flexibility in moving multifamily somewhere else, not next to existing residential?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, this is a collaborative process with the community and the city of Sugar Land. I will say that this bottom right site over here, which we do not control, this I think is already slated for multifamily development, so it does make sense for multifamily to butt other multifamily, as well as these top right corners. We had mentioned that certain projects along the waterfront, what have you, are walled in and they have their backs facing the streets. And because of that, you know, the more that you start moving the multifamily away from the existing houses, then they're basically cannibalizing the waterfront so that you can't have, you know, single family houses and stuff facing the waterfront. It's just, it's a different look. It's just more of like a, almost like a castle rather than having things at a, at a smaller scale along the waterfront, but that's certainly something we can investigate with the community.
Going back to what Suzanne had said, I, I think that the vision I had for this property, and it's really not overly relevant, but that it would have dining, it would have retail and it's some conversation along the way, it was, you know, a dream was to activate the waterway. I'm not saying that's your responsibility, but it was, it was just a bigger than multifamily, bigger than just housing. And I do understand, looking at the properties that surround it, the Lake Point Owner LLC, there are other properties, but to be candid with you, I'm with Suzanne on this one, I'm just like multifamily. And so I'm certainly grateful, I'm just not excited yet. So I would love to see high-end retail, high-end dining, high-end something that this could become truly walkable, a neighborhood grocery store, something that would make it look more than a bunch of houses. And I love the green space, I love the trees, but at the end of the day, it's just a bunch of housing is what I'm seeing.
Yeah, no, I think that's totally fair. I think it is profoundly difficult to make this site work when you're talking about grocery stores and things like that because they're looking for highway frontage and there's also Whole Foods within a walking distance. So we're a little concerned about cannibalization of existing, you know, when people, there's a race to the bottom, you know, it's like whoever's offering the cheapest rent essentially. So that just becomes a little bit, you know, it could be, it could be counterproductive. Again, the market can turn and in that event, we'd be happy to pivot. And we, we are sort of developing a street grid that basically accommodates that flexibility of uses. Now with respect to the multifamily themselves, that, you know, the ground floor of the multifamily is often activated with restaurants. A lot of people put their gyms, the sort of apartment complex gyms on the ground floor too. So it makes it feel more active as a ground floor as opposed to just seeing people's, you know, messy rooms and that kind of thing. So that is something that, you know, if we undertake the multifamily ourselves, that's something that we can definitely look into.
Sure.
Thank you. Question please. So we have retail, we have dining around on the perimeter. And so my question is, how many square feet of dining and retail do you need to serve X number of residents? For instance, we built it out exactly as you planned, we have X number of residents. Is there enough business space, dining, retail, et cetera, to serve this entire community?
I believe with the current proximity to Lake Point Village, especially with kind of a flagship, you know, I actually did some research, that's actually the number one Whole Foods in the state of Texas in terms of sales. And so I think that with the, the current relationship to all that retail there, there's, I think that there's enough services to service this population. I mean, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because we're talking ultimately about 300 some units of single family housing. Yes, it's quite a lot, a lot of people, but it's not something that is going to radically shift the demand for the sort of commercial services.
Sure.
Thank you. So have you signed a purchase and sell agreement on this property yet?
We are, I think we're slated to close in, oh, when are we slated to close?
Sometime in early June.
Sometime in early June.
Okay. And so yeah, I appreciate the fact you want to save as many of those beautiful live oak trees as possible. So you said you wouldn't have to cut down many. So about how many is not many?
Well, we don't have a true tree survey yet. This is basically done from a Google Earth kind of thing, so we can't really see where exactly those, that stem or whatever trunk is. So I can't really commit to a specific number, but right now, what you see here is all extracted data from Google Maps and we've basically made sure that every single row of these trees, except for, you know, of course, the multifamily ones where they're hiding in these little brown islands, but we've tried, we've pretty much tried to save as many as we can.
Okay. And I know there's vacancies in restaurants next to Chirascas that area, but still it would be really nice if there was some sort of a dining option that could take advantage of the waterfront there. Thank you.
Yep.
Good shot.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you say 307 single family homes in the 31 acres? Is that what you said?
Something. Yeah, it's, it's around 300 for what we're calling kind of the townhouse, urban home or plex mix. So it really depends on how that, that shakes out the number of attached townhouses versus, you know, smaller urban homes. And we're, we're open to kind of fine tuning that number as we go forward.
And I know the city council, when we've had retreats, we've looked at this area and we've also talked about hotel, conference center, restaurants, the retail that my colleagues have mentioned as well. I've never imagined this to be all residential in this area.
Yeah, so there is that kind of beautiful inlet there that had kind of some fountains and a plaza there. Our kind of first walk through the site, that seemed, you know, like a possibility to activate the waterfront a little bit. And again, I think we've laid out our plan to be flexible so that if that area made more sense to everyone involved to do kind of a flagship destination there, I think that's a great site for it.
Ship destination of?
Of a restaurant, you know, a waterfront restaurant, dining.
Jewel box type of restaurant.
Can you just point your mouse? Where is, I know where Milano banquet hall is, so where, where is that?
That's right here.
Oh, it's down there. Okay. And this is coming over, the, the bridge that's coming over is Floor Daniel Drive?
This one, yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. So you make that first right and that's where Milano is. Thanks, Mayor.
Matt or Jennifer? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I do like this design. I like it better than some other proposals that I've seen with just the grid of all the houses. I think just some feedback of what we saw when we went to the Pearl in San Antonio, they did this really neat round, it was a barn or something and had a theater type setup in it with, with the bar and all of that and where they could use it for entertainment, dancing and things like that. So some type of a community, community type center with a pavilion or a closed area, something very special and unique in the middle of that, when they are outside enjoying the green space, like you said, a destination, you know, for your goal as you're out walking around or meeting with your neighbors and things like that. So that was just my take on that.
Yeah, I think like having something like a band shell so that we could have like, you know, local bands play and then people can hang out on the lawn and that kind of stuff. I think those are kind of like what we kind of call commercial-esque activities, but don't necessarily require the commitment of trying to lease out a full, full-blown restaurant.
Yes, and we have a committee for that.
Great.
Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Commenting in a couple of questions. So I under, I think it's a very interesting concept. I think there's a lot to be, I particularly understand the need for more housing in the city. I understand the need for the missing middle. And I think your plan for the aesthetics of it makes a lot of sense to me. That having been said, for, for me personally, to get my arms fully around this, I feel like it's missing an opportunity for retail development. I mean, you don't have 53 acre tracts like this available within the city of Sugar Land every day. So I agree that this is unique and I agree it's generational. And I also, you know, at the same time, I understand that long-term, having more residential here can activate the existing retail that's there in, in Lake Point Village. So one question is, have you, have you given any thought to the connectivity? In other words, connecting these new proposed residential units with the existing retail structure and what are your thoughts about that?
That would be through those bridges, Floor Dan-, Floor Daniel. That is kind of out of the scope of our land, but I mean, we could certainly think of ways to beautify it.
Maybe not a fair, follow up, Mayor?
Follow.
Maybe not a fair question for you. Whose scope is that within?
I believe that's the city's right of way.
Okay. And is the, another question I have, can you, can someone from city staff, is Pearl still coming in? And can you show on the map where that would be and how many units that would be?
Yeah, so the Pearl would be located here. My understanding is they are in the permitting process right now. They do have the zoning in place, 385 multifamily units, I want to say. And so I think they're just, they're in the middle of the permitting process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Matt, I'm gonna jump in with you. So First Colony Mud 10 is, is involved in the, in the trail system and actually the pedestrian bridge. So the coordination, I think, that the chairman's talking about is the coordination along the existing trail that exists along the lake, which is owned and maintained by First Colony Mud 10, the mud.
Thank you, Mayor. That's very helpful. I, I hear you saying that you're open to more retail flexibility with respect to retail down the road, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. When I look at some of the other developments that you've mentioned, okay, I've been to CC, I've been to Seaside, I mean, that was not 100% residential and then the commercial comes to that, there's some integration there. And I know you didn't, you didn't show this one, but you know, if you think of cinnamon shores and places like that, there's, there's retail baked into it. And some of the pictures that you showed where you've got walking trails and you've activated those businesses, it's integrated within the structure. I'm probably not using the right terminology, but it's integrated within the structure of the development. And so I, what I guess what I would ask is, okay, here's the, and I understand this is a concept plan, but you know, where would those opportunities be down the road for integrated, mixed use within this tract, within, within this, within this 53 acres?
I think Commissioner, you know, what is very, very challenging about planning for retail now is that ultimately we are, we, in the city of Houston, city surrounding areas, it's a very car-driven culture. And if you just look down here, like just look at the size of these parking lots that service these smaller building footprints. And so what that would mean if we, if we're trying to attract those ties with tenants now is a whole lot of concrete and asphalt, which is something that we are trying to, you know, work against slightly. But I do think that if things change, like look, we are, we understand the, the need for flexibility, things that, for example, Adam had mentioned towards the, this inland and stuff like that, those are the areas where, you know, you have the street access that could potentially be something. But, you know, we just, you know, if we were trying to draw retail right now, it would mean that we're drawing lots of parking spaces.
And I think the first big move is to use that pedestrian bridge that is really successful right now. I saw people jogging and walking their dogs and crossing the bridge, but right now it's, it's a one-sided kind of bridge to nowhere, to the vacant floor campus. So once we have residents moved in here that are using that bridge every day, ideally the existing retail will see a boost and that may spur motivation for phase two or phase three based off the success of just simply connecting this trail network to more residents who they very much do value walkability and, you know, being able to walk and get your coffee and stuff and have, have to go through the Starbucks drive-through. And so. And so step one is connecting that trail network through the pedestrian bridge. Step two is working off of the success of how that affects the existing retail, and then building off of that new demand. But I agree, we do have a little bit of flexibility, kind of in that central area of the site here, especially because it's, you know, it's a very short walk to the pedestrian bridge, kind of up into this area.
Thank you. Mayor, with your permission, invite-
Now, why don't we go to the commissioners, and then we'll come back to council members?
Right. We can just go down, I won't call on you individually. If you, just let me know if you'd like to make any comment on P&amp;Z. Go ahead, Mary. We'll go down the line.
Yeah, in following, in following with the discussion around retail, I think that's something that when we've, usually, I mean, when we've talked about this in the past, that has been something that, you know, that we envisioned to make this something very special. And what I just heard was, yeah, that we might have to have a lot of concrete. So is there a way maybe to even think out of the box? I know for Imperial, there was discussions of using trolleys. So is there opportunities using parking, say, on the other side of the retail, and using it as, you know, sort of a new, new thing that people can ride the trolley to retail or something like that? I'm not sure of, and I know, I know that bridge may not, you know, it may be too congested doing that. But, you know, I'd offer that up to just think out of the box versus just saying it's not something that we could do. Because I think that, you know, if you've heard the discussion from council, I mean, we've really discussed about making this place sort of a, you know, a little diamond, if you will, for, for a location, for where we would draw in even other people from the neighborhood to come and go to these, and I love the green space, by the way, but to come to this area. And I think something like restaurants or coffee shops, those kinds of things would draw those types of people in.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I understand the desire to turn this into an iconic destination for the city of Sugar Land. I think, you know, we live in a very hot environment. And so, and ultimately, the tenants really define what they are able to accept as a business. And, you know, what I mentioned about highway visibility, a lot of parking, et cetera, those are all key things that are just the baseline to attract some of the quality tenants that you are referencing. And also, it would be remiss for me not to mention that when you have vacant retail, especially a lot of vacant retail, it is a tremendous risk to the community at large. It invites more vandalism and other types of activity. You know, having a density of residential, we call this eyes on the street, where it creates sort of this, you know, safer feeling environment.
Hey, Pete?
Yeah, I, I will echo pretty much everyone's sentiment, but not to kind of beat on the dead horse, so to speak. Would it be possible, just some, a feedback point, to at least include some of your flexibility into the concept plan of where it could go potentially if there was a possibility of some mixed-use retail, understanding all the challenges and the, and the constraints. But like Councilmember Ferguson said, this is a big swing, right, that we're taking at redefining this, this area. And let's take a big swing at the vision and incorporating some of that retail and mixed use to get people excited to want to live there. The green space and the amenities around it already are pretty nice and they're there. But I, I think from a vision perspective, it would be helpful just to be able to see that flexibility on the concept plan. As you're going to residence tomorrow, I believe, and coming back to P&amp;Z potentially, that'd be great. I had one more question, if that's okay. Your reputation as a, as a developer speaks for itself. I've lived in Houston my whole life. I've definitely heard a lot about Lovett. Can you talk to where this ranks in your, like, from a size and scale perspective in, in your projects that you've done or about to do, where this ranks? Is it the largest site, smallest? I just wanted to get a sense of, from that perspective, is this the biggest development project or one of the biggest?
No, we have many projects much, much larger than this. So this is probably, maybe of 0 to 10, it's probably 7. And I've heard a lot of your comments. I just wanted to say this, doing retail here today is suicidal. Five years from now, maybe still suicidal. You know, you, I don't know how long Chorosco has been there. I don't know, all those restaurants, how long have they been there? There's still 20-some thousand square feet with a Whole Foods anchor, and they're still not leased. And these restaurants have been vacant for a long time. And not only restaurants there, a very, very good friend of mine is one of the best well-known restaurateur in Houston. He's got a restaurant here, right here. He's thinking about closing it. He was going to do a second concept here. He's thinking, he's not, he's canceling that concept. It is very difficult. Every day you hear about restaurant closing in Houston. And I'm just not, you know, this is, if you want retail, this is not our deal. We, we just need to drop out. Because I don't think it's going to happen. It's not going to happen today. If someone else can figure out a way to make it work, hallelujah to them. Because I've done over 3 million square feet in my career doing retail development. So I think I know what I'm doing. And this is just not the right location for it. Maybe someday, 50 years from now, 100 years from now, people's traffic pattern has changed, whatever. That may happen, but not today. Not for the next 10 years. If y'all want us to do retail, it's too much risk for us. This, this is not our deal. So thank you for y'all, thank you all so much for y'all's time.
Sure.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. Quick question. You, you have talked about all the green space you have here. And I think the words destination were used, destination running, destination parks, doing farmer's markets and things like that. Have you guys considered what parking you're going to do for the people that don't live in this area? Where they're going to park, where you're going to park those people that, you look at Rice University and the running trail, right? You look at Memorial Park, takes a lot of, takes a lot of land for people to park their cars there. Have you given that consideration?
Sure. So that's one of the great benefits, actually, of having the multifamily site. You can provide the parking garage that has ground floor visitor parking, which will satisfy, you know, those event needs. And again, it's screened, it's set back behind the apartments, so you don't see it.
Are you going to use that for the apartments, or is this, are you going to have set aside for visitor parking?
A lot of times what we'll do is, the apartment residents have from level 2, 3, 4. And then the, the first level is a mix, either for visitors or can be reserved for special event parking.
Thank you very much. A couple of questions. One, so the phasing, can you just, just go through the, I don't understand why, help me understand the nine-year timeline that you guys are looking at.
Yeah, so a lot of that comes down to market absorption and the velocity of home sales. Now, if basically a lot of people are buying all at once, something changes in the market, then great, we can build faster. But it's not, you know, if you have 40 unsold homes and you're bringing another 120 unsold homes, that actually brings down property values across the whole area.
And then question, two questions for city staff. One, I know there's been a lot of talk about whether, I don't know if this is Ruth or Devin, about like the life cycle of the city and the, you know, making sure that we take advantage of the undeveloped areas or opportunities for redevelopment. Something means nothing. But I'm curious just to get from cities' perspective, is this highest and best use of where, for, for what we're looking at here?
So, good evening. Devin Rodriguez, Director of Redevelopment. To your question about is this highest and best use for this property, I think there's a lot of things you have to take into consideration, right? Access to the site, location, what, what are the uses that are around it? This proposal, in terms of mostly residential from an economic development experience, is what I was anticipating for this site. In order to have a large destination draw, kind of the vision, I guess, planning ideal that is laid out in the land use plan, we really need a lot more density than what we currently have allowed for this site. And so if we want to have that destination draw, there needs to be a lot more than 700 multifamily units to really make that market capacity work. So this is in line with what I would expect from an economic development standpoint and for its location and highest and best use. Also, you know, we did a Urban 3 study that I believe you all are familiar with, that we brought to the council and to the commission. And it talks about the value per acre for like, single-family homes in terms of our standard single-family neighborhoods that we have in about 90% of, of the city. And then it also talks about this middle housing or compact residential and then multifamily. And the compact residential, and I'm going off of memory right now, but it was about like, four and a half, or three to four times the amount of what the single-family neighborhood is. So it is still a tremendous increase in value of the overall value per acre by having this more dense, but still neighbor, you know, neighborhood-scale, single, single-family development, but in a more compact form.
And then, just, just as a way to potentially build some understanding for both commission and the public, when, I anticipate that when we take this for formal action, that there'll be conversations around Regional Activity Center. Does this satisfy the criteria of regional activity? Does it meet the needs, or does it meet the vision that's put forth in the land use plan? And so one of those pieces, at least through my experience, through the whole land use plan process and all of that, was that there was conversations around, you know, Sugar Land will, will not put forward standalone multifamily. And I'd like to, just again, in a, in, in the spirit of trying to build some understanding as we go into making a recommendation, from the city's standpoint, can we, can we get some, some color, some, some explanation about, one, how this satisfies the criteria of Regional Activity Center, potentially, thinking about it holistically with Whole Foods, satisfies that? And then, and then some commentary around the standalone multifamily within this track? Because I think we're going to get those questions when we take formal action.
Sure. So as we talked about earlier, this is 52, 53 acres out of the 150-acre Regional Activity Center. I know there has been conversations with both of these groups over time of how much of a, what's expected out of a Regional Activity Center needs to be included within a particular site. I think, I would say that not everything that needs to be in a Regional Activity Center is expected to be on a singular site. It needs to work kind of holistically within that entire 150 acres. And so what we're seeing here is, is the gap of, of rooftops being filled on this particular site. I think, you know, ideally, there would be some level of commercial here. But I think there is also just the reality of, the practicality of, you know, the, the future success of the site for, for those kinds of uses. You asked about standalone, single-family or multifamily. So the code, or not the code, pardon me, the, the land use plan says that standalone, single-family or multifamily should not be approved, that it needs to be in a regional or neighborhood activity center. And so that's really important here, that we are in a Regional Activity Center. And so, you know, you're going to have the more urban style, kind of like you have, you know, in our neighboring building here, versus your garden style where there's, you know, two and three-story units that are kind of surrounded, sprinkled around parking lots. And so I would say that's the distinction that the plan was making. And again, you know, from an ideal standpoint, would you have that first-floor retail? Sure. But I think we've also seen in a lot of places across the country where that has been mandated, and the demand isn't actually there. And so it's just that vacant. I'm not sure that that's a better option than having, you know, residential uses that can be occupied. Or as they were saying, you know, putting the, the gym, or, you know, the, the office, or other kind of public-facing parts of the, the multifamily on that first floor, to, to sort of activate the building in a different kind of way.
So just last, last comment, and it's just meant to point of consideration before. It feels like we need to think about this. Yes, we're looking at a concept plan that is, that is specific to what's on the screen here. But as we move forward with this, we have to think about it in the context of the entire Regional Activity Center, which goes across the body of water.
Right.
And so to not get too zeroed in on this and think about it. More Bron.
That's a great point. Thanks, Taylor.
Farina?
Actually, I agree with Landon. This is part of a Regional Activity Center. I think it's one-third. So if there is activation, retail, restaurants, et cetera, as part of that total Regional Activity Center, then, you know, every track doesn't need to have retail. I personally like this layout a lot. I like the idea of preserving the oak. I think there can be different destinations. This can be that residential, homely kind of a place where people go for walks, recreation, you can plan your activities. You still have, you will still have your farmer's market. And they are saying that the center of the entire track in their phases and as their data changes could be, could be converted into a retail center. So they're not opposed to it. I also think that where they have these red, brown zones of apartment complexes, they could, you know, like that 356-unit track is a very large track for just 356 units. I've done enough to know that it's, it can be compacted and, you know, it can go five-story. And you could still activate that front down the road if their data supports it with some retail. So I think if you were to just give us some idea that if, if the data supports it and that 27,000 square foot gets, you know, rented, and, and this Regional Activity Center, and this development requires more restaurants and other retail, then you could, you know, set aside some, some tracks for future as a concept plan, you know? Because this is just concept. You haven't bent down your parking and-
Right. That's right.
So I, I personally like this layout a lot, actually. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. And yes, certainly, you know, we have room to kind of adjust this. I, you know, wanted to kind of agree with you that in the big picture, we kind of need to understand that there's responsibility on the other stakeholders across the water here. Perfectly valid criticisms about the state of retail and walkability. I myself lived in Houston for 20 years without a car, so I know the struggle, right? And I'm a huge kind of walk, bike, roll advocate. My suggestion would be, we start the conversation with the retail that already is doing well, and what can they improve? And how can we improve the connection to that to support them through the trail connection, even other mobility options, you know, suggesting that there may be more efficient ways for them to utilize their surface parking areas. And I think that's a great conversation that we should be having together. Thank you.
Tepana?
I also agree with Landon and Farina. I really like this layout. We are in need of residential in Sugar Land. And I do agree that it would be nice to have restaurants and coffee shops. But if we can come up with a way to connect the Whole Foods area, there is a lot of empty space, and that we don't have to have as much in every activity center, as long as the other three will have a kind of connectivity with the restaurants. And I think that as long as you guys are open at a later time, if market is changing, and that we are, our restaurants can be full every night, and this is something that we need, we need housing. And we need this middle housing. We need it quick. Everyone is looking for it in Sugar Land.
Thank you. Thank you. Randall?
Okay, I, I'm in, in agreement with everybody on, on the plan. I really like the plan. I don't see that you need that much retail in there, because a few coffee shops or, or some other kind of small dining to make a, make it, you know, a draw to some of the people. What I see more of is a traffic jam and a lot of on-street parking problems. That's what I see up there. I'm curious to see how you plan on taking care of all the parking for duplexes and multiplexes. That's going to bring in, you know, four to eight vehicles per multiplex. That's a, that's a- That's a, that's a lot of storage area, for lack of another word. And that, that's the biggest problem I see up there. And then bringing in the other people, they're going to want, you know, to park by their walking trails and to go to their coffee shop. So my, my biggest problem there is, what are you going to do with the parking?
Yeah, I think from the, well, I'll just call these medium-density with the duplexes and, and all that kind of stuff, every single unit will have dedicated garages. All, admittedly, these yellow blobs are undifferentiated right now, um, but we do have alleyways and what have you so that people access, um, their own unit from the back and, uh, that kind of thing. With respect to people visiting the green space, it's great to be very popular and that kind of thing and encourage more people to take alternative modes of transportation. But as Adam said, uh, we can look at different ways of using some of the multifamily, um, parking, uh, to, to support sort of the public visiting the green spaces as well.
Follow-up question.
Follow.
I've built townhouse areas in the inner city and I, I've dealt with parking and it is a nightmare for, because the, the parking area has become very small and you're trying to get as many as you can in there. It becomes just a complete nightmare in there, trying to get it, people in and out. And then, you know, God forbid, an Amazon truck drive down the road and want to deliver some packages. It's, it's a, it's a serious problem with the, and that, that's my biggest problem with that. I, I actually love the layout and the way it works. I just can't see parking working very well.
You mean parking for the residents or parking for people?
Parking for residents, you know? I built three and four-story townhouses in the city and we did, we did a terrible job of designing the parking areas. They were difficult to get in, difficult to get out of. Like I said, when an Amazon truck came, it was a nightmare. People wanted to get out, the Amazon truck was dropping packages off and he was blocking, I'm sure, which you're thinking is alleyway. There's only one way in and out. It's, it's, it's a pain in the butt.
Right. So for us, you know, uh, we have laid this out in much more detail with our prototypical units and our shared driveways and that kind of stuff. And it works from that standpoint. Um, one of the benefits of having all of these houses face the street is that when it comes to delivery, you're not trying to have the, you know, moving the, the big truck in the alleyways. They are dropping off packages at your front door and stuff like that. So, you know, hopefully there's, yeah, I mean, there's going to be some minor inconveniences, of course, when you have big trucks parked in the street, um, dropping off a package, but, uh, it's just relatively, you know, resolvable, I think.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So what I've, let me kind of summarize what I've heard, you know, from everybody, and then I've, I've got some thoughts that I'd, I'd like to share with you. You know, there's, there's been a question, I guess, of just market flexibility. And I, we may be looking at this the wrong way. Tell me about, uh, tell me about the park programming. Because isn't it true that, you know, when you program 10 acres of parks, it's about activities? You know, it could be about, uh, you know, you could have a, a food truck court. You don't have to have a fixed asset there. I mean, I've been in the townhouses across the lake since 2007. So I've witnessed the, the Lake Point, uh, Town Center and all that it was supposed to be, and I've seen all the stores and the restaurants that have failed. And so, I can tell you, that doesn't work. So we have to think about it, I think, differently. And I think programming, you know, parks, programming, I think a little bit of market flexibility where you have in the, in the center here, uh, Kirby, I think you pointed out, the 12 and a half acres, you know, you, you, you build the perimeter, you see what kind of community you build in the process. Because let, let's face it, it's all about, one, it's all about the market, we don't know what the market's going to be. You don't, we don't, nobody knows. And that's where everybody's missed it. They projected a market that wasn't there. We don't want to do that again. So we want to, you know, more or less take our time, let the market inform us as to what it'll support. Part of that's about building a sense of community. Part of that, I think, is about having a little bit of flexibility with space, maybe thinking about it a different way with food trucks, programming, activities, something that generates demand and foot traffic, which then, which, which then probably ends up being some people that are fairly hungry and might want to go to a food truck. But talk to me about the programming for the parks.
Absolutely. Some of you may know, we own a project in Houston called Post, and it is the largest rooftop park in America. So with respect to programming park spaces, we are probably the best in the game, both in terms of public actors and private actors. Um, we have everything from foam parties at night for kids, and we have neon lights and hundreds of screaming children do that kind of thing, uh, to tribute concerts, um, the whole nine yards. And I think, uh, we're known for the diversity of our programming and the diversity of people we pull in, uh, with our programming. So I think that's exactly right. Uh, we, transparently speaking, have made our project work because of the amount of part, programming on the park. Our restaurants at Post would die without that kind of intensity with that green space. So the green space is really to us how, uh, that is the economic driver of the entire community as a whole. Now, obviously, this is residential, so we don't want to make it so active all the time that people are like, I can't live here because it's too noisy and stuff like that. But also, uh, to your point about, uh, uh, or what I earlier said, what I said earlier is like, the infrastructure will be there, the street network is there. Um, and we will have, um, a range of types of spaces, from hardscape spaces to turf spaces. Those types of things can accommodate pop-up retail, pavilions, different things like that. And so, uh, we just, you know, our attitude is that this green space is, it's not necessarily a, a botanical garden that always has to be about like, whatever, roses and stuff like that. It's an active space that's being used to generate economic activity for, uh, the entire area and hopefully the region.
And just one more thing. I think a lot of our favorite case studies and examples of cities, we love to walk down a main street, they don't feel overly master-planned. You don't see, here's a big chunk of retail, you know? What happens and why those spaces are successful is incremental development. People move in first, the green space gets developed, and then we decide, hey, you know what? I would love to open an ice cream stand here. And through that small incremental development, that's how you get a really authentic place connected to the community. And so I think that's maybe an approach where we can have the infrastructure built-in and the programming built-in with the green space and let that kind of natural bubbling up of incremental development happen.
See, and I think, I think what that does, that addresses some of the comments that, that I've heard, which is where it's not, where it does have a component of, of possibly retail, be it a pop-up, be it a food truck, you know, where it's just not a brick and mortar. And I don't know that the brick and mortar works. Certainly hasn't worked to date, and that's been a long time trying it. I wouldn't, you know, one thing I learned a long time ago, if it doesn't work, don't, don't do it again, it's not going to work then either. So I think, you know, to have a little bit more discussion around that, maybe tomorrow night when you have your public meeting, I think might have, uh, I think that might give people some, some food for thought. I think we're going to have to look at it differently, quite frankly, and we're going to have to have a little bit more flexible space. I like the, I certainly love the parks. And I, I think, uh, I'm going to, it's easy for me to say that because I'm not going to be mayor in about three months, but, but, uh, I think the city might be willing to participate, you know, in the parks and in the programming piece. I think that's something that we could work with, work with economic development and, and see if we could work something out to where, you guys, you guys know the business, and then we, we could somehow participate. Anybody else's thoughts? Go ahead, Will.
So, great presentation. I appreciate you stepping into a room of high expectations, and I want to be clear about something. My expectations are not your responsibility. I appreciate you wanting to invest in our community. I am very grateful. Uh, I do believe you're a missing piece for us. We need our consumer. I believe you're capable of bringing our consumer in the form of housing. Thank you for that. I want to say all that upfront. Um, as I look at this diagram, understanding this is really, really early, okay? And I look at it and I see 31 acres of townhome, urban home, duplex, multiplex. When, when you put that on there, I'm just curious, in number, is that 150 units, is it 300 units, home, duplex, blah, blah, blah? Does that make sense, the question?
Yeah. So in total, um, and the reason is, is that, again, the, the plan is still elastic in a certain sense...
Sure, sure, sure.
...in terms of the number of units and the size of the lots. But roughly, it's about 360 in the most dense case, 300-ish in the less dense case. So it's somewhere in that range.
Okay, no, it's fine. I just, I'm trying to, because it's a blank page and, you know, I'm trying to use my imagination here to, to meet that need. I really liked what the mayor said about food trucks. I thought that was kind of Austinesque, if I may. But what we also have to be reminded of, this is not the Pearl. This is not, uh, uh, this is not the Mueller property in Austin. This is not what they have in Plano. It's okay, right? Well, it's okay, this is going to be our own thing. If that's our approach, this is okay. So I'm really excited because I know your missing piece you can bring can turn our existing retail and dining around because the consumer will be living in these properties. So I, I appreciate all your work and your, your enthusiasm because I'm excited, I'm just like, oh! So keep it coming.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
We, we've always, City Council, we've always talked about the missing middle, and you've heard that today as well. Price points on these homes? What, what price point are we looking at? Because we're missing that 28, 26 to 40-year-old, um, resident. And I'm just wondering what you're, what, what are you putting, plugging into your spreadsheets to make this work?
Right now, I think the sales price is around $300 a square foot. Is that kind of roughly around where we are? Um, and then again, to the point earlier about how many units it is, in the higher-density case, we can make the houses a little smaller, which is more accessible as a first or second time buyer. Uh, when you're talking about a less dense case, the houses become bigger, the yards become bigger, the whole nine yards, that's more, you know, that's more expensive. But, um, I think that our goal is to provide a full range of price points. You know, definitely nothing that we would consider, yeah, it's catered for people who are, are young professionals, I guess. So, um, you know, 1,500...
Six, $700,000, yeah. That'll work.
$600,000, $2,000. At 2,000 square feet, I mean, 200, yeah, yeah, you're right.
I mean, we do have some products, though, that are, that are smaller, like 1,500 square feet, two, two and a half bedrooms and stuff like that. Those are great for young families, so...
Well, thank you very much, Frank, Kirby, Adam, uh, your team. We appreciate that, uh, and we look forward to hearing back from, from your public meeting tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Item number three, closed executive session for the City Council. 3A, closed executive session is authorized by 551 Texas Government Code and of course with 551087. Deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Matt?
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Hand vote, please. That motion carries, the PNC is adjourned. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank y'all. Matt? Thank you, Commissioners.